Big giant tie, it's the giant tie anyways. Hi, everybody. Good afternoon, I will call to order this district of Clearwater Regular Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 20th at 2:00 P. M. Are there any late items we'd like to add to the agenda? Okay, we are going to move things around a little bit and start with item eight B so far the S so that we can get those people through so can I get a motion to adopt the agenda with the changes? Thank you, Council McKenzie, seconded by Council Harry, all those in favor and that passes. Adoption of minutes, any errors or emissions? Seeing none, we were in secretary. Moved by Council Fizzle, seconded by Council McKenzie, thank you, all those in favor? And that passes, so we'll move right on to delegations, we're going to start with FES BC, Court Pratt, I see Steve on there as well, so whoever's starting will just get Michael to get you up on screen here and we'll fire away on this. Thank you for coming, they're virtually. Road trips are really fun, but you know, we'll take this for now.
Well, thank you, your worship and council, we're very delighted to be here with Greg from Arrow and George from the Wells Gray Community Forest. Very much, I want to come back and visit your community, it's such a beautiful and wonderful place and you should be very proud to to be in Clearwater. Or is the staff, are we getting the presentation up on the screen?
E F is coming up in a second here, just a second. Okay, we're there.
All right. Well, I don't think you have, can you go to page one, please?
Yeah, just give us a second.
Okay. There. All right. Yes, as you can see, we we're here with Arrow and Wells Gray Community Forest, normally you would probably be engaging directly with the community forest, but we took an opportunity with this invitation to share with you some of the the highlights of the the project, a very successful project that was recently completed in your community. But first, I'll give you a bit of an overview, kind of a provincial and even global and international perspective, so B C in Canada very much want to achieve climate change targets under the Paris Agreement. And in that, the Paris Agreement, it encourages countries to look at forests and and use the forest to help mitigate climate change. And so what we will have been able to do over our five year period is to sequester, which means to absorb carbon dioxide from the atmosphere through growing trees or avoid emissions of carbon. And that the amount of that is equivalent to taking 1.1 million cars off the road, so that's a really big number. And I think it's the the take home message for you that that I would like you to take is that forestry absolutely is part of the climate change solution and therefore, you know, what we do in the forest transcends the the urban versus rural divide. It's something that everybody, not only here in B C in Canada, but all around the world want to see advancement on. And so we do that three ways in accordance with international account accounting, carbon accounting standards under the Paris Agreement. Number one, we we can plant trees that otherwise wouldn't be planted. So, for example, after wildfires, we're planting 36 million trees this year. And those are trees that wouldn't be planted by private companies, so it has to be planted by the government. The second thing we can do in forestry is to fertilize trees, so as they're growing, they're sequestering carbon. And if we can make the trees grow faster, then they suck carbon out of the atmosphere that much faster. And there's a project nearby, your community in the Lower North Thompson Community Forest that we're very proud to support with fertilization. And then the third method that we have in accordance with those international carbon accounting rules is to avoid burning wood waste in the forest. And if we can use that, and the reason that's important is because when you burn wood piles slash piles in the open like a campfire or a bonfire, there's lots of greenhouse gas emissions, yeah, it includes carbon dioxide about 80%. But 20% is methane and 1% is nitrous oxide. And those two last two are very potent greenhouse gases, so if we can avoid open burning, that means we can avoid significant greenhouse gas emissions, next page, please. The second biggest program that FESS has is reducing wildfire risk and protecting communities all around the province. We've funded 121 projects all around the province. And when we do that, we often achieve numerous other benefits, like improving recreational opportunities with trails and it improves wildlife habitat, particularly in in areas where fire has been excluded unnaturally for a long time. So sometimes mule deer benefit and bighorn sheep benefit. And and whenever we can, we use the fiber, the the trees, the the branches that that result from these treatments, the thinning treatments, and we use them to make bioenergy or pulp wherever we can, next page, please. Increasing utilization. So the big part of our our program is using more wood. And whenever we can, we do it where it it's eligible to contribute to reducing greenhouse gases. It doesn't always work that way, so for examples, on some rainforest in the coastal areas of British Columbia, they wouldn't normally burn. So if we use that wood, it doesn't count as a climate change benefit, but we still would whenever we can, and so we put it in this category, next slide, please. Very much, a lot of our projects, probably almost a third of them involve First Nations and quite often they're leading the projects and or have a very significant involvement in the projects. And a number of First Nations have said to us, you know, thank you so much, FESS, for for, you know, allowing them the opportunity to participate in forest management. It, in their view, it contributes to reconciliation because it provides so many benefits, it's it's often more than just a job for the young men in in some of these communities to get out and and do forestry work. And it it improves their self esteem and and has a whole bunch of social benefits. That's this is what the the First Nations leaders are telling us, so we're very proud to be helping some First Nations get more involved in forestry, next slide, please. And one of the things that we like to do is to share the good news, so you know, there's there's local experts all around the province and Clearwater is no exception, you have passionate, really intelligent and and capable people right in your own community. And we rely on those people to submit proposals to FESS so that we can approve them and and put the money in in the hands of the local experts and the local groups so that they can do the good work that we do. And we think it's really important to share that that those stories because they are truly the unsung heroes in in British Columbia and particularly in rural British Columbia, next slide, please. So with that, I'll turn it over to Greg to talk about how Arrow was very much involved in this particular project that recently was completed in your community.
So with the Wells Gray Community Forest, we met with George and had a look at all the all the piles. We had good access for B trains. George done lots of good work on the community forest to have good in block roads that also gave us access for our B trains to be able to to go back and forth from from the blocks to Domtar and with that help we were able to and FES, we were able to put this project together. And it was very successful, we ground almost 20,000 cubic meters of of slash that would have normally been burnt in that in that one cutting permit. So, yeah, it was a it was a real success win for all of us. What what we're doing right now and what the slide here demonstrates is that we're now also doing stuff other than just grinding in the bush, we're taking biomass logs from areas that we can't access with B trains. Whether it be maybe smaller blocks, it just isn't feasible to bring the grinder in or it's or the roads just aren't accessible by our B trains, making it nearly impossible to to grind even with FES funding. So we're able with this new FES funding, we've been able to do the bring in these biomass logs and just recently, we've brought in 33 loads of biomass logs from the community forest up until breakup. And basically, there's a breakdown of what the of how we come up with one, there's basically 1.64 man days worth of work for every load that comes in. And most of that stays within in the community itself. And I just got a breakdown here of 4.7 hours, basically, the logger spends processing and loading a logging truck with their with biomass logs. Another six hour cycle, basically, from the site and back, including load and unload from the community forest to our facility in Kamloops. So user that's using your local truckers. And then we spend about a half an hour to grind that grind or chip that biomass log. And basically, why I say grinder chip is because what we do with that biomass log when it comes in is we try to extract the highest value we can. And a chip is a lot more valuable than hog. So by being bringing this biomass log in, we can, we can extract that value, take the better log to the chipper and and get the most value for that log. There's an hour of unloading and sorting and about two hours of you know, the truck getting loaded and unloading at Domtar and in the the short commute. So basically, the majority of the jobs to create biomass logs are kept within your community. And what else do I have to say say to that? I guess with FES has allowed us to have a lot of learning out of what we've got with that FES funding, so we've been able to basically figure out ways of sorting more efficiently. We've been able to test the hog fuel and we're still currently working on that, trying to see if that hog fuel is is worth more to Domtar because now there's pretty much zero risk of contaminants for for Domtar, so our our argument or or a thought is that, you know, that product should be worth more because there's no downtime caused by contaminants going in the boilers. So we're trying to trying to figure that out. Initially, a lot of the loggers refused to even cut a biomass log, they didn't think it was worth their time to cut a biomass log. And we've had very few loggers try it and not stick with it. So we've had a very high success rate with loggers that have been willing to try it. And and they continue to do it. And so so that's been good. Wodleggers is currently shipping us in logs from another site. Initially, they were pretty against doing the biomass logs and now they're doing it. So we've got, we've got a lot of a lot of support and the and a lot of from industry and and from government on this biomass log program. So, yeah, I think that's about all that I have to say at this point, I'm sure there might be some questions that I can answer later, but thank you.
All right, thanks, Greg. With that, we'll we'll turn it over to to Mr. Burko.
Okay, thanks, guys. So as as the council knows, the Wells Gray Community Forest is part of our forestry working group, so a lot of these initiatives and concepts are sort of started there and and really made possible on our local land base with support from my Board of Directors and 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 local loggers, so we we targeted four blocks that we logged. These blocks had already been logged in the 1950s, they had a a high rate of decay. Mostly rotten cedar, rotten hemlock. And 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 those sites really are occupying some some very good growing sites for the community forest, it'll contribute to timber supply for our local community forest and of course for British Columbia, so one of our stewardship goals is to take these rotten stands, if you will, and turn them around into product product pieces of our land base. So we had the intent of doing this, we 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 bid out the 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 three, four blocks there with the intent of bringing everything to the roadside to try and reduce burning. And we were successful because of of partnerships with Arrow and FES BC, if if each person didn't play a part, we would have had to burn so much wood up there, it would have been like pretty terrible. We did some advertisements in the newspaper, sort of preparing people for that, but we were successful and Arrow, we went right into the snow in November and finished the program there, so. Yeah, pretty incredible, at the end of the day, to to have almost 20,000 meters, 350 logging trucks of of slash branches, old tops and butts, rotten wood utilized, it's an incredible thing to see, really. It is the way of the future, I believe, Community Forest is very proud to be, if you will say, the first ones to bring chip trucks into our cut blocks locally. We hope this this is a trend that we can continue with with partnerships that have to be in place, otherwise, these types of things do not happen. It was only because of, again, FES covering trucking, Arrow going the extra step to to utilize and and work with us on our slash piles. So really, it's about the partnership moving forward and yeah, I want to thank Arrow, FES BC and our local loggers for working together with the community forest to pull this off, if you would. Very successful and a really cool story, I think, so.
For sure, excellent. I think that's our speakers. Council, have any questions on this? Somebody, yeah, Council Sim is gonna ask one.
Thank you very much for the presentation. When I believe the last time you had presented to council, you had indicated with FES that maybe there was the funding wasn't going to last forever, have you had some good news, given some of these good news stories?
Well, we're we're always hopeful. Well, first of all, the good news is that we have enough funding to continue for another year. So but by this time next year, we're we're hopeful that the province will contribute some more money so that we can continue the good work that we're doing. I think it's very strategically important that, you know, and George alluded to it and and as did Greg in terms of the learnings, operationally trying to learn how to do this and to and and we don't, we're leading the way, we're learning and and we're showing others that it can be done. But it takes this transition to growing the bioeconomy in British Columbia and and this transition from a high timber supply to a lower timber supply and needing to preserve as many jobs as we can with fewer sawmills. It means that the the secondary fiber users like pulp mills and pellet plants and electricity generating facilities need to figure out a way to use more fiber from the forest rather than just getting the fiber from sawmills the way they used to. But this transition to a larger bioeconomy and a lower timber supply takes some time and and that's why this funding is so crucial to maintain it for the next little while until everybody figures out how to be as efficient as they can be. And hopefully, it's our it's our dream that a larger bioeconomy in forestry in B C doesn't need funding. But I think it does need it for the next little while.
So supplemental to that, I I think that you know, if there's anything that this council could do in terms of supporting it, given the announcements from the federal government and their budget, it it just seems to hit a lot of tick marks and maybe you just do need that support, so I wouldn't want to speak on behalf, but if there was to come back to us. And then, George, could you just confirm where the four lots were that you were referring to that where this was so successful?
Yeah, you bet, so up road two at about seven kilometers, so when you get into those, you know, those old cedar hemlock types up there, you know, old loggers would tell me, you're never, you're never going to do anything with that boy. Well, we did.
Yeah, I think you're all very understated, it it really is a tremendous successful partnership, so thank you.
Further questions to council? None, yeah, I, you know, Steve, you know this, George, you know this, Greg, you you know this now anyways, we've been on a few calls together at this point. I'm a huge fan of Forest Management Society B C. I will champion this wherever I can get, I continually will continue to put out the call to refund FES BC. Couple of things that every single time I see a presentation, I I see something new in it. The one on this one that I had caught before because there are a lot of critics of burning biomass for fuel. But when you're doing that and you're taking into the controlled environment of somewhere, say, like Domtar and doing it through the stacks, your ability, I'm assuming this was the the what you were talking about here, your ability to capture or burn properly those other greenhouse gases like the methane is greatly enhanced, so that we're putting out even more are are keeping more environmentally harmful greenhouse gases out of the atmosphere by taking it, you know, into a place like Domtar or into a facility like that, and that's just one more little thing in in the picture of all this beyond utilizing things that would normally be put into our airshed to clog it up for people with breathing issues and using those things, even if the the value has to be subsidized until as you've demonstrated here with George and with Greg, a market can be seen to make this a more worthwhile product. I just see so many wins in what you've done here that I I'm really hoping that that we can get together, World Communities as a coalition and and ask for FES BC funding to be continued to keep these kind of programs way forward for at least another five years would be would be great for me and then, you know, something new will come along for you to do. Some sort of new evolution, plus plus the tree planting stories that have been coming out the last couple of days. For sure, fantastic work, fantastic work. Hey, any further comments or thoughts before I let these guys go? Thank you for your presentations. Excellent work and hopefully we can spread the word out there. Have a good day.
Thank you and and thank you, Mayor Blackwell, for your strong support, it's been noticed, I have very noted, it's hard not to pay attention when you speak, so we really appreciate the support that you've been expressing.
I'll start directing, I'll I'll start directing it behalf on council back to the Forest Minister as well. I think that's the 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 elbow that needs to go out there, so thank you for your and have a good day, bye bye. Okay, moving on to Ms. Sim, the other Ms. Sim, the one that it's going to tell us all about community recreation, healthy living stuff in a time of COVID. We'll just take a second for those online to get set up. Because, you know, everything's slower under COVID. We're just rearranging the world for Zoom, you'll notice later in the presentation, talk for upgrading audio video equipment, you're now understanding why that's important to the community, so or to how we do business, so we'll just give it a half second here. Welcome, fire away.
Okay, hello, Mayor and Council. There's a blue light. And I apologize in advance if I get a little bit make me short of breath. And so, hi, on behalf of the Community Recreation Healthy Living Program. Thank you. Um, so my name is Megan Sim, I'm the new Community Recreation Healthy Living Coordinator for the district. And I was raised in Clearwater, I've been here all my life from all that I can remember. And after graduating high school, I moved on to moved to Victoria to go to school. I have gone to school for public health and social policy, my major has been health and community services with an area of focus of healthy aging, indigenous health and international and global health. So a little bit about me, COVID threw some curveballs at us all and so about a year and a half ago, I moved home. And so in this presentation today, I'll be touching on what we've done in 2021, so a year to date. Some more big picture stuff about the Community Recreation Healthy Living Program and the values emerging from the CRHL program. This past year earlier, Leslie and I got together and we've identified some goals of where we'd like to see the CRHL program go in 2021. And about a month ago, I would say we put out a CRHL Needs Assessment Survey to the community in which we got 168 responses from, I think, so it's a fairly good turnout, I'm pretty happy with it. So without further ado, we'll get into things. So let's talk about what has been done in a pandemic for the CRHL program. We have we've encountered many hurdles this year, as you can imagine. Our number one challenge has been space. So with our gym burning down, it's been really hard to find some places to actually be able to have some of our programs. So we've been renting out a little room from YCS Classroom B, it's also where TRU has had their classes happen. And it's at the very far end of the building, don't often venture down there, but it's there. And we've been able to squeeze nine people plus an instructor for our fitness classes in there, so it's still pretty small. Looking at the records from previous CRHL classes, we're down to about half the capacity that we were before the gym burned down and also before COVID or not before COVID, but before COVID restrictions as strict as they are has has gone on. And and we're also not allowed in schools, which is also a really big hindrance to the success of the program. Our other hurdle has been COVID-19, very famous topic. It's led to the cancellation and resuming of programs, which has led to thousands of dollars in refunds and very little revenue to be able to gain that back, so it's been really challenging. As I'm sure that you all have heard yesterday, our classes for low intensity, because we're not allowed to do high intensity and have still been postponed and that'll mean that by the time that the provincial health orders lift for fitness classes to go back in session for indoor sessions, that'll be eight weeks that will have been down to the count. And so, yeah, we are completely shut down again during the circuit breaker, so that's Um, so yeah, we are completely shut down again during the circuit breaker. So that's, um, that's something. Uh, and we can only have 10 people gather outside too. And now that the snow is off the ground, I really hope that we can be able to get outside and enjoy that fresh air. Our third hurdle has been finding program facilitators. This has been a big one because, um, as you'll hear later, we're really looking to grow and diversify the program so that we can reach and engage a variety of different people in our community. Because we have some awesome people in our community and it's really important to engage everyone. Um, our one primary fitness instructor has announced that they won't be renewing their contract as of mid-June. Um, but we did put out an expression of interest to get people more involved with, um, with the program here. So as you can see, we do have a list here. I won't go through everything, but, uh, the nice thing is, is that we have been able to keep busy on the administration side of things. So I have a couple of questions for council. Um, and feel free, just answer me as, as they come into your mind, but I want to ask what you think that health is? And what does health mean to you as a counselor and as a representative of our community? I do. This, this is not rhetorical.
Why, why do we have to do all the hard, hard work here? Anyways, coun- counselors, fire away. Mine, mine is, uh, health is stop eating donuts, but, um, but yes, getting regular exercise and, um, mental health, I think during the pandemic has been a huge, it's always a huge factor, but it's been especially a huge factor. The way we've had to live over the last calendar year.
Absolutely. So then following on that, I hear physical health, mental health. How do you achieve this? How do you achieve? Um, and say, I'm in good health in terms of your physical and mental health. How do you do that?
For me, it's not Nevada, just saying, but.
Say, good, good habits, um, good routines. Uh, I wouldn't say I achieve it. But that's how in theory I might achieve it.
Thank you. But that. Yes. Yes. Right on the money. That's it. It's not something that you can achieve. It's a lifelong journey that is constantly evolving and as is our community, right? We, we get newcomers coming in and we evolve. Our whole community evolves. It's wonderful. So the World Health Organization defines health as being a state of complete physical, mental and social well-being and not merely the absence of disease or impunity. And I included this because it shows that health is multi-dimensional. It's not actually just your physical and mental health. It's everything. It's a big picture concept. So you could go out and you could run a 10K every single day and you could not put a thing that's bad for you in your body. But if your heart and your head are not in a good place, you're not actually achieving a healthy lifestyle. So I've made this fun little diagram here and we don't have enough time to go over absolutely everything in this, but I do think that these concepts are really important to touch on. Um, these here are what I call the pillars of health. And each pillar does its part in keeping up your roof of wellness and your wellness is kind of how you live your life. It is a accumulation of all these habits that Counselor Taylor was talking about that contribute to the, the lifestyle of living well. So we have, uh, physical health, emotional health, mental health, social health and spiritual health that are key factors in, um, keeping those pillars standing and keeping your roof of wellness strong and healthy. But there are factors that play into keeping these pillars standing and strong. And number one is, uh, the social determinants of health and the social determinants of health are non-medical factors that may influence health outcomes. I know that as a council, um, you've been talking about some bigger picture items and knowing that uh, social determinants of health are more non-medical factors. Can you think of anything? That would be a social determinant at playing Clearwater to people living well and healthy lifestyles? This is not rhetorical again. So income, income would be a social determinant of health, right? If, if you have a lower income, it makes it a lot harder to access services. Do you see any others? Mobility issues. That's right.
I was gonna say age, like tying probably to some of those factors too, like as your older things become more challenging.
Yeah, your level of ability, your ability to actually access services, what's available to you. Um, some other things that may be considered could be, um, housing, food security, level of education, access to health services, geographical location, whether you're tied into internet or not. Um, your gender identity, race, sexual orientation, there are lots of them. There's actually 14 big main on the money ones, but um, I think that in each community, we can identify some different factors that play into people's overall well-being. Um, and the social determinants of health also really highlight, uh, how interconnected the departments are, not only in local government, but also as stakeholders within the community. So, um, you know, interior health, YCS, et cetera, et cetera, even the developers. We all play a part in, in enhancing the health of our community, even if it's indirect. So for our second one, uh, we're just going to touch on health literacy, which is basically, uh, the degree in which people know how to take care of their health. And this is really important because if you don't know how to take care of your health, how are you actually going to have this element of self-care? It's really hard. Um, so we call this knowledge translation or the no do gap. And so we know how to take care of ourselves. And the literature knows how we can take care of our people. But how do we tell our people how to take care of them? And how do we as facilitators be able to take care of our people and provide opportunities for them? Um, and then, uh, thirdly would be health promotion. I'm sure that you guys have heard this term before, but it's essentially the bottom line is help is good for you. And, and this relates health literacy into finding effective and promotional ways to communicate to people of our community and also our valley. And lastly, this is probably another term that you guys are all familiar with as counselors, but capacity building. And that's the development of, of knowledge, of skills, of policies, of structures, of systems, of commitments, et cetera, et cetera. Um, that enable effective health promotion. And so a really good example of this that I would like to touch on is the trail systems being built in Clearwater. We're taking these awesome assets that we have in our community and we're building the capacity of them so that, you know, people can go up for a bike ride. They can take their dog for a walk. We're connecting a community which is so important in capacity building. Okay, let's start on the 2021 goals of the CRHL program. So goal number one is to expand the CRHL program by attracting new instructors and targeting a diverse population of participants. So this just speaks primarily to the need to diversifying, um, within our fitness programming as well as wellness contributors. So some, uh, big targets that, um, as the coordinator, I would really like to hit this year. It's to hire new, three new instructors for the fall session. Um, and keep a record of new and returning participants to assess diversity in different areas of our wellness structure, which goes back to our roof of wellness. Goal number two, uh, is to enhance program delivery and clientele base by exploring online platforms to improve accessibility to program features. Um, I think that what we've seen out of 2021 is that we are becoming so reliant on online platforms. I mean, here we are having a, a Zoom meeting for a council, right? It's, it's different and it's new. Um, and this is especially true considering how we don't really have the capacity to offer in-person opportunities at the moment. Um, and we also don't have the people to facilitate these wellness opportunities. So, um, this is, this is an important one that, um, I've been looking into and had the overall vision of creating a one-stop shop for all your wellness needs, all online. And so this could be, you know, your physical health. So you could get, uh, your workout tips, your meals, whatever you need. And really just creating an online wellness community. Um, so I reached out to the web designer and asked her to create a quote about what this portal would look like. Turns out that it actually is quite expensive to create a website portal, uh, approximately $12,000 expensive. So, um, Leslie has suggested that we just table it, um, until perhaps the 2022 budget. Goal number three is to offer financial support for low-income individuals and families to advocate for the inclusion of our whole community in the CRHL program. So health is for everyone. It's not just for those who can afford it, which again circles back to our social determinants of health. A financial assistant takes away a, a big barrier for people to access some of these supports and these awesome programs that we have in our community. Um, the United Way has granted us, uh, a significant portion of money, $5,000 to assist in getting people. The assistance that they need in order to participate in the CRHL program, uh, which entitles them to one fully paid CRHL program up to a maximum value of $75 and a 50% discount of full price programs to a maximum of five programs. And this is just so that we can, we can include a multitude of people who need this support. Um, looking in the future, it'd be really nice to see something a little bit more long-term and self-sustaining as opposed to relying on a grant. But for now, this is, this is awesome that we can, um, support the people in our community that really need it. Goal number four is to implement diverse programming to reach and engage various demographics, interest groups and types of people. Again, diversity, diversity, diversity. You've heard this over and over, but that's because, um, we need to engage a, a diverse population of our community because we're all different from each other. Um, so to make this goal a reality, um, the CRHL program would like to implement a program that, um, focuses on the inclusion of men specifically. Um, and integrate three new fitness classes that fit within a one to five ranking, um, of difficulty. And that's just because we can all be track stars here. I know that I'm not there, so. Lastly, goal number five is to engage indigenous communities and promote traditional and holistic methods and practice. And this just supports our roof of wellness through a different lens. And, um, we get to learn more about the history of the traditional territory in which we live, work and play, um, which supports reconciliation and, um, the calls to action as well as local governments. So on to our needs assessment survey of the CRHL program. Um, it was really interesting for me, having just come into this position to see exactly what these, uh, respondents would like to see out of this program. I do note that this is not representative of our whole community, but rather a, a sample size in, in the population. So it turns out that the respondents, uh, most people were familiar with the CRHL program, which is awesome to hear. But the main reasons for not participating were either due to COVID or due to, um, the fact that they just moved to town. And they had no idea about it. I, I saw so many responses of people saying, I just moved here in February. I just moved here last week, which is awesome to see that our community is growing and diversifying. And so do we. So the needs assessment survey offered insight into three main key points. Number one, people put fitness and physical health as their top priority and health value. So thinking back to those pillars, the five pillars, physical health is the number one thing that the respondents would like to see. Um, improving fitness is the number one recreation benefit that people enjoy. And fitness is also the number one programming area that people are interested in, which is why I've kind of been going back to fitness throughout this presentation. The second key point would be that people love to be outdoors. And I think that that's why a lot of people move to this area is because we do have a plethora of outdoor activities and are so lucky to be here and live here. Um, the number one thing that respondents want to see in Clearwater is more trails and open spaces, which was interesting. That even trumps a public pool, I might add. So after improving fitness, um, enjoying nature is the second most important recreation benefit to respondents. Um, and the third main theme is funding and ways to pay, our favorite topic of conversation. So one of the questions in the survey was to sustain recreation and healthy living programs, would you be willing to pay more for programs offered? 157 people responded to this question. Um, 50 or 43.31% of respondents said, yes, they would be willing to pay more for the CRHL programs. 12.74% of respondents said, no, they wouldn't be willing to pay more. And 43.95% said that they don't know if they'd be willing to pay more or less. Um, 10% of people who have not participated in a CR, our H L program, um, haven't done so because they say that it's too expensive. So note that this is six people who have said that it's too expensive out of 61 total respondents of that question. Um, and just for your context, uh, for a fitness program, we offer six classes for $45, which equates to $7.50 per class. So that's my spiel. Um, thank you so much for listening. Do you have any questions, comments or concerns as a council?
Council questions of Ms. Sim. Counselor Harry. I just did that Stephanie without putting my mic on. Um, so anyways, to council, um, can you ask your questions with the, uh, mic on? So that everybody, including those following up home and watching later on the recording can do it that. But, um, if you want to summarize your comments again, that would be great.
Sure. Yeah, I just overall really impressed with the direction the program's going and super happy with the outdoor options they're being offered.
Also.
Yeah, I'm, I was just gonna second that. I really like the goals that you've laid out for the year. I'm super excited to see, um, kind of where the diversification kind of takes the program. Yeah, outdoor stuff. I, I agree. And we've got such great facilities and being able to kind of get outdoors, um, and, and use some of those. Uh, would also love to kind of think how we can explore more use of, um, the arena in the summer and things like that, like other ways in which we can kind of, kind of make use of the assets that we have both outdoors and indoors. Um, and you know, the facilities that we have kind of more broadly.
And Brice, Counselor Rizzo.
I'm really impressed with your creativity and, and all the, um, new things you're coming up with. One of the, just for council to know is for seniors, of course, that's what I'm talking about, uh, is the sip and social that, um, she came up with. And the seniors were behind the plexiglass and were able to have tea and visit, which they've been really lacking and they enjoyed it. We had actually set it up so that they could have tea and do a activity or crap. But they really just wanted to sit and tea, have tea and have talk. So that just that little bit of creativity and it created a, a massive amount of excitement. So thank you for that.
I don't even know if it's a, an element of creativity or if it just emphasizes that in COVID for everything, we just got to get back to the basics and do what makes people human and happy. And if it's going outside on a hike, if it's socializing behind plexiglass, we can do that. We just, we just need the space. And thankfully we have so many trees and trails to explore that we can do that here.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, anybody else?
Um, thanks very much. I just wondered with, because I really appreciated how you, you're looking at kind of the, the funding, et cetera. I'm wondering how you're going to present that funding. Um, I think in the past, words like hardship fund have been used and some different things. And I'm wondering where your direction is going to go.
What kind of funding are we talking about?
So the, to offset some of the fees that you're talking about, and I think you said that the United Way had some money to help with that. So when, when that's advertised, how is it advertised to, to let people know while still maintaining their dignity? So when that's advertised, how is it advertised to let people know while still maintaining their dignity? Or have you thought about that yet? Or is that something?
How we're doing it is through the principles of the high school and Yellowhead Community Services. So it's not a specific advertisement out into the community. It's actually allowing people to come forward and tell us who's maybe in need or would like to join. We'll see how that goes. And from there, we've got a year to use the money, so.
And supplemental to that, because we've talked about fixed incomes and that includes seniors as well, is that also an avenue that will be utilized?
We had actually applied for youth and specifically, but we could, we could actually ask for a scope of work change if we thought that was necessary.
I don't know, I just.
Fire away, counselor.
I can speak to that. There is funding. Senior's budget that I have sort of allocated for that type of thing, if that's what they're interested in. Right now, the fitness seniors have been doing the, you know, free, Silga. Sed and Be Fit and Somatica, but if they want to venture out, there's definitely the options for them to do that.
Excellent. Excellent presentation. Thank you for your time. We'll let you escape the room and and I'm sure the word's going to get out of the community about the opportunities and the needs of the program and the changes in scope, et cetera, and the ability to maybe have some subsidized use of the program avenues like YCS, et cetera. So I think we're back to unfinished business because I think I forgot that that Chris is on the line here still somewhere. But maybe just a quick staff report while we're getting that set up on the slash.
Yeah, so Domtar and Arrow are working with the property owner to look to see what they can take away. They're definitely interested.
Yeah, and I believe that we had our fire chief go up there and look at the piles and that's right. So there's been a pretty good survey of that. These are the piles on the new logging area behind the racetrack. It's private property, but my understanding that there's quite a substantial number of them and hopefully that Domtar could come up with some use for that. So then Arrow. Moving on to Mr. Crowell, we had our little presentation last night, had some public. Fill us in in the greater council role here, I guess, for the official public part of the council meeting.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, we presented to, to the public yesterday, how their open house at 6:30. There was five members of the public that came. We will summarize in a more formal meeting minutes. But my chicken scratch from after the meeting is what I've got to go on now. Put together a small PowerPoint, outline the project, why we're wanting to do it, what the need is, what the schedule would be, the pros and the cons of it. And then opened it up. That was about 10 minutes and then opened it up to question and answers from those on the line. Some of the comments received were, was a resident asking about the potential expansion of the wastewater plant? If the proposed works would be within the fenced area, we confirmed that it was. They, they asked, they asked various residents asked about odor. That's, that was a, you know, that was a main concern from the meeting. For those that were in attendance can, can agree. People asked if this would make, if this project would make the odor better or worse or have an impact, which it shouldn't make it, shouldn't make it worse. If anything, it should help if we, if we include such things as those odor control blankets that were, that have been discussed previously. One resident asked if there is a plan to deal with the ongoing odor, which, which we responded by saying that we expect the odor to be better based on the improvements to the treatment process completed last year. Although it's not going to by any means solve the problem altogether. It's, it's more the processing of the SRS than it is the wastewater treatment technology, the aeration itself. So that, as the public works personnel can attest to, it is, seems to be more of a result of, of kind of within that 12 to 24 hours after the processing of the SRS takes place. So this project would have no impact on that particular piece or, or the rest of the wastewater treatment plant odor process. It was mentioned that the district is in the process of a strawberry flats sewer expansion feasibility study right now. We talked through what that looks like, what some of the challenges are in that, in that area. And the timeline on that, just for residents nearby the wastewater treatment plant to, to be aware. And mayor and council encouraged residents to follow up with any feedback they might have or questions or comments. I believe Leslie left her email to those in attendance for anybody that might have comments they couldn't make it or has follow up comments after what they heard. So yeah, that's, that's essentially a summary of, of the topics discussed in the presentation itself.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from councilor's staff or based on what we went through, saw last night? It was excellent presentation. Thank you for that, especially for the clarity on the, the odor control blankets and things like that. I think that made quite a lot of difference. I think it's something that maybe the public wouldn't understand until that presentation. So I'm hoping we get a fair amount of public feedback on this so that at least we know all the, the neighbors that are directly affected are aware of the plants there. Anything further from council before I let Mr. Crowell go? Okay, thank you for hanging on. We had quite a long presentations today and thank you for your excellent work.
Okay, thanks guys. Talk to you soon.
Bye bye. Um, moving on to Mayor's report, it's been a busy couple of weeks and I actually did take some notes this time because you know, sometimes I forget. Anyways, on the eighth, I attended virtual Kofi, which was quite a mix of interesting and dry, but always informative, interesting talk from the premier at the end of that. Oh, go ahead. Yes.
So we discussed Kofi at Silga, and I wondered if you were left with the impression that there was going to be some detrimental impact to the forestry industry that this area should be concerned about.
You're gonna have to be more specific on.
It was just a general comment, but it was, it was felt that there, there will be some, and you'll have to help me with the phrasing. Proportioning.
Aportement.
Aportement that was going to be coming. It seems to sort of follow on what our area went through, but it was going to be much easier and more of a told scenario. So that they were going to carve out areas of tenure and it was going to be strongly incorporated into reconciliation efforts.
Yeah, I think, I think the change that is going through right now, the forest system and the reviews that it's going through are going to take time. And I, yeah, I think there was concerns with that. As you know, from our current situation with the tenure transfer, that's not resolved yet. We're, we're quite a, you know, we were fighting that battle before COVID, so that's how long ago that was. And that has not been resolved with either our local First Nations, nor the tenure holders, or any possible benefits for local community forests. That, that situation is still not resolved and that's before it would have been a handshake deal and, and the other business would have taken over and started planning, et cetera, within a few days of that transfer happening. That's not happening anymore. It's going to be a slower thing. Some of the positives on it all though were things like mast timber and especially with the high lumber prices during the conference. That every piece of fiber, let alone every mill log is worth something right now. And that, that new economy, it ties into a lot with FASBC was talking about, was basically finding the value in things that never really received to have value before. That may save us. That may be the deciding thing that will save the field loggers, the replanters, tree planters and people like that. Because we are with the current lumber prices in a, in a time where added value makes more sense than ever. So, but yes, there is definitely concerns about how the future will play out with tenure transfers, contracts. We're still in the very early days and as we are more than well aware, we were the guinea pigs on that. And it hasn't been particularly comfortable for anybody at this point. Yep, no problem. Yeah, so. Attended at least one mayor's vaccine roundtable meeting. As you know, we all got vaccinated, got vaccinated on the sixties by itself, which is great. It's very interesting to be on some of these calls and seeing that Clearwater, because of its size and the vaccine rollout, there are a lot of people in this province are very envious of, of, of what we've had happen here. I think we should all be incredibly grateful for that. Having been to the clinic and seen how wonderfully it was run. Fantastic. A lot of volunteers, a lot of good people. But as Counselor Taylor was talking about utilization of that building, there were a lot of comments that without the doors open, this is a bit of a doom was one of the comments. So I, I think in the future, looking at the sportsplex as more of a year round, multi-use facility, maybe we're going to have to start looking at it the lens of more windows, more access points. You know, and think of it that way in terms of long range planning to make it a more usable facility for sure. So those comments were coming out of the people that a lot of them had never been in the curling rink side of the building. And you have to sit with people for 15 minutes and have a conversation before you find out whether you're going to get woozy and fall over. It's amazing what they'll tell you. Anyways. Pigeon is this weekend or community cleanup already being asked nicely for supplies by people. So we're going to try to make those available through the front desk here so that I don't have to scramble. I, it caught up with me. I totally forgot that it was this weekend also. I mean, it's this weekend. Why are so many people bugging me about this weekend? But yes, I, I think we probably got only 40 people out there at three organizations that have committed already. So, and, and Ms. Grue's gonna kind of clarify.
Blackwell, if you would like to pass that along, all the people that have sent emails to you, Andrea will take, Ms. Libra will take over. List, the list of where they're going, make sure people are going to the same place. She's going to pick up your supplies for you tomorrow and hand them out in the next couple of days.
I love having, I love having staff that are interested in taking on tasks like this. That is wonderful. Thank you very much. And I will get that out there on Facebook after this meeting that now it's up to them to get in contact with the front desk, Andrea specifically here. That's great. Yay. But I will be on site on Saturday and Sunday mornings at the sportsplex if our bins are going to be there, just to monitor that we're not getting people's. Yeah, yeah, just, just to monitor to make sure that people's couches and old datsuns aren't going into those bins. So yeah, and other than that, it has been a series of phone calls and contacts and emails and a whole bunch of things. Obviously, most of you are aware now, the River Road project of the volunteers has fallen through due to there being an issue with a unstable rock slope that they, they discovered, I believe, on the first day. So there's been contact with people involved in that behind the scenes, trying to see whether or not Ministry of Environment wants to move forward or has a funding for that project. I was able to get our reporter to ask Mr. Hayman that at the B C Park's funding announcement and he's aware. But it does not seem at this point that there is any funding tied to that. The other areas of concern are a lot of community scuttlebutt about changes to the ambulance service and changes to the traffic side of the RCMP issue. I've been in contact now with both of those entities. Beginning conversations to start on the RCMP side to start saying that we would like to have a discussion about any changes to traffic services in this area. Because that'd be very concerning if, if service levels were to be changed in any way from what they are, which is sort of what seems to be out there. And with the changes in the B C ambulance service contract, how that might roll out in the future could dramatically affect the community like Clearwater. So I've asked Ms. Grue to try to get us a meeting with the person involved, but I'll be following up with the inspector. I've got now to my third inspector in the RCMP, all of them have been supportive of up to this point, but I'll be talking to the third one tomorrow. And that's it for my report. Counselor Bradford is not here due to personal stuff. So Counselor Prizzle, you're up next.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo your comments on how the vaccine. My blood's, it's so easy to go in there, it's just quick, everybody's watching, maybe get the shot and get out. Really well orchestrated, I thought. I have done a long session for the vet recruitment documentary. I'm on it. It's a little scary. Three times lucky. I went to go three times, sounded late to get it done, but we got it this time, I think. And just a quick thing to let you know that the seniors had a bag pick up lunch last Wednesday, a couple of Wednesdays. They really enjoyed being able to pick up their lunch, have a quick visit and go off. They missed the lunch. Yeah, so that's what I can do.
Thank you. That brings up that I think we're on our second last week of soup kettle, maybe one more week after this. And then farmer's market starts in May. Counselor Harry.
Not much to update in terms of the things I've done in the last two weeks. But there is something I wanted to get up on a soapbox about in case there are any public out there listening. And that's just the unsightly premises bylaw. The survey did mention a few people who are concerned about it. I've been driving around town and there are some outrageously ridiculous properties right now. An unsightly premises in your neighborhood can drop your home value up to 10%, according to some of the research I was doing. So I know we're a community that doesn't like to snitch on our neighbors, I guess, but I think the realization needs to be that we have to control those properties because it also affects the value of everyone around you. It has, affects your neighborhood and it affects your ability to invest in your house. So if you, the members of the public generally see people with unsightly premises out there, please do contact the district and let us know. That's how we implemented our bylaw. And that's all I've got.
Yeah, bylaws are complaint driven for sure, for all issues, not just unsightly premises. For the most part, we don't go looking for it, but yes, sometimes spring cleaning needs to be spring, summer, fall and winter cleaning. I just had a conversation with somebody who's a landlord and had to clean out a house in another community and it's an epic adventure. Anyways, moving on to Counselor McKenzie has had to step away for business. So Counselor Sim, you're up next.
Thanks. I think also on that, I think it's a great opportunity with spring being here, that even business owners or people who have their billboards welcoming people to either end of town, it's a great opportunity to just drive around and just see if your billboard reflects your business. Is, is that what you're liking to see and how you want our community to be represented? So a nice, a nice reminder there. Thank you for that. I also just want to touch on the, the comments about the sportsplex and the curling rink having that opportunity. There seems to be a lot of catalyst funding and stimulus and it would be interesting to see how council moves forward with that. I want to just note that we have the North Thompson Sportsplex Capital Business Case for looking at proposals for a second floor or how to diversify there. So you know, we've, we've got some options to concept wise. CYSA, that's our Clearwater Youth Soccer Association, as we spoke about earlier. Record numbers of kids being out there, and I think that the association has done a remarkable job of staggering it. It may look a little odd to see a bunch of green shirts running around out there, but when you drill down into their sports plan, it is excellent. And they've really thought of everything right down to all the, the hand sanitizing stations, the ball cleanings, like they've just thought of it all. So big thanks for getting our youth outgoing. Speaking of thanks, the McKenzie brothers are also due a round of applause for offering some catalyst money for the decorating and getting the town spirit for. Speaking of thanks, the McKenzie brothers are also due a round of applause for offering some catalyst money for the decorating and getting the town spirit for the. May sixth cruising project. So thank you for that. SD seventy-three, I was at a human resources meeting and they talked about needing to recruit up to the rural communities. But Clearwater was really easy thanks to our recruitment video that we had done. And they had seven grads in particular from one of the provincial universities. Of those seven, six said, wow, Clearwater looks really interesting. So. I just want to acknowledge that people are watching and it's, it's resonating, which is, which is really nice there. And lastly, I just want to do a big shout out to staff. I love the thanks, we're hearing you. Comments. I think that's been really helpful and valuable and I know that it probably takes some time. But I think that it's a great loop around and a great easy way to kind of educate people on, on what's happening. So absolutely marvelous on that. Thank you. Oh, it was really good. So please pass that along to Marvin.
Yeah, lots of positive feedback out in the community right now in a time where people are still stressed out by all this. And so it's good, I think. Think, thing, word is getting out there on things. Councillor Taylor, your turn and then we'll circle back to councillor McKenzie.
Thank you, Mayor Blackwell. So fairly quiet. We did have the, the Trails Task Force didn't meet, I think it was April seventh. And we did a site visit on the. Planning for the park drive to Raph River Trail. Definitely a trail that. Is logistically challenging with a steep slope to, to try and navigate and hydro poles and sewer lines. Steep banks, but, but we're kind of still kind of working on kind of exactly what that will look like and trying to obviously keep that within budget. Again, like the vaccination clinic, my husband and I, when I got a vaccine, such a smooth process. Very well kind of managed and, and kind of great to see. That opportunity come to the community so early. And then, yeah, like seeing the kids out in the soccer field last night was, was nice too. Great weather for it too, of course. Now let's hope that keeps up. That's it for me.
Councillor McKenzie, anything to add? I know there's a car show coming up that you could promote on here.
Yeah, aside from shots, which I went in yesterday, got my own, my first dose of Pfizer there yesterday. Like councillor Taylor said, smooth process and sit for fifteen, out the other door and the way you go. Still got four limbs, twenty digits. So a lot of hype about people worrying about this shot and. I think we're gonna all be okay. Yeah, as for the car show, Saturday, May eighth.
Oh, and microphones. You're up. Should be. Okay. Yeah, Saturday, May eighth, I'm not mistaken. And numbers are filling up good. As difficult as it is to pull something off, I think we're on the right track to make it work. It's a, it's a touchy area. But I think we've got the right processes in place to. Pull it off. Yeah, I think, I think Friday is going to speak a lot to what is, isn't, isn't officially allowed. Within the next till after May twenty-fifth weekend, but like a lot of things in the world, you kind of have to keep going with the way you're going until you know otherwise. These days, so for sure. So thank you for that. Yeah, it's, we do need some community picker upper. So let's hopefully, hopefully preserve this one for sure. And it's. Moving on, committee of the whole, item eleven A, there is a recommendation. Or recommendation that the Minutes of the Parks and Recreation Committee of the whole meeting held April sixth, you received. Do I have a second on that? Frizzle, all those in favor? Let's move. We have the whole reports, economic development.
Our next meeting will be May eighteenth.
Infrastructure.
June the first for infrastructure?
And there we are back to councillor McKenzie on Parks and Rec.
Next meeting will be June fifteenth. That being said, we have three recommendations and I'd also just like to recommend. Recommend that everyone from council gets out to take a look at these four potential dog parks, voice concerns, ideas, any of the above.
Do, so you have your two recommend, three, three recommendations there? Yeah, so three of four. So beauty movers and seconders on those. So the first one, assuming councillor McKenzie is going to move, do we have a second or for that? Right, you have public and for the recommendation. So councillor McKenzie, if you'd like to, to read the first recommendation, then we'll ask for a second or on it.
Absolutely. First recommendation is that the boat launch located at the end of Lakeview Drive be designated as an area for watercraft launch only. To include repositioning the wharf launch and that sign is, is placed for moving.
Second or on that, councillor Taylor, all those in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, sorry, discussion. We can have a discussion on this. Yeah, go ahead. Like fault is, sorry.
Before the vote, I just wanted to speak out against this one. I'm not a big fan of this idea based on the survey we had. The vast, well, not the vast majority, but the majority of survey respondents we had wanted it to be hand launch only, dogs allowed, swimming allowed. So I am going to vote against this recommendation.
Further comments or questions? So all those in favor? So that's three.
No.
Opposed?
Opposed?
You're opposed? Would you like your opposed recorded, please? So councillor Sim and councillor Herring vote opposed. Okay, next recommendation councillor.
Next recommendation that staff be directed to look into the requirements for it says designating Lakeview Road to the boat launch for local residential party.
Second or on this one?
A second.
Councillor Sim seconds, all those discussion, all those in favor? To ask as unanimously, unanimously councillor McKenzie, the last one.
Yeah, third and final recommendation that staff arrange for two dumpster bins to be delivered to the sportsplex parking lot. And that community cleanup day be held on April twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Seconded by councillor Frizzle, all those in favor and that pass?
Mayor Blackwell, I'm, I'm just wondering if you wanted to speak at all to the, the parking on, on Lakeview. I know we had quite a robust discussion at it. At the Parks and Rec meeting, but just again, because we are being reported and.
Yeah, for sure. Lakeview Drive, is that what it is? Is it Drive? Lakeview Road. Yeah, sorry. So the basic concern there is, and it's been expressed by almost all the locals that we've spoken to on that road. That is quite a narrow road with a very steep. Which incline? Anyways, visibility is, is very poor and it's a very steep road. And when you start stacking up cars on either side of the road. It becomes the visibility and a safety issue for local residents and people using the area alike. We have an area that's referred to as thirty-seven East, which is across from the church that used, and it's the lot that the old chuck wagon restaurant. Used to be on, it's been leveled, it's gravelled. That area is actually now owned by the district. And we're welcoming people to use that as a parking area until we develop that fully as park. When it's developed as a park, it will also have parking where you can leave your vehicle there and walk up to the boat launch area after you've launched. Boat or kayak or whatever. So please feel free for public, members of public to park there and then walk down for your. Boat lock, boat launch access after you drop your boat. And that's why we're trying to do that to respect local neighbors and make it safer and smoother for everyone. Moving on to finance and audit, councillor Taylor.
So we had a meeting earlier today. Our next meeting is May fourth. And we also have a recommendation that a special meeting of council be held on May sixth, twenty twenty-one at two PM. For the adoption of the twenty twenty-one tax rate by law.
Second or on that, councillor McKenzie seconds, discussion?
So emergency management is nine to noon. Yeah.
And so, yeah, emergency management that date, nine to noon. Okay, so moved and seconded. My comment will be excellent work by the finance departments. Roxanne, Ms. Shepherd, another amazing budget process again. Sorry for the stress we put you under. Sorry, the stress we put your department under sometimes. But, you know, leaving the process, I've always left with an incredible sense of confidence. Especially the last number of years where we're going, how well managed this district is. And I think the taxpayers should take great faith in that as well. All those in favor? Or did you have comments?
I, I just wanted to echo that. I think it's the best budget yet. I think it's something and I think it really blends well. And I just, I, I really loved reading through the package and I want to thank you. It was just awesome, really great. And to our fearless leader, thank you, councillor Taylor, Finance Chair.
Okay, moving on to standing committee reports, joint services advisory committee, it's councillor Herring's on there. I think we might have to move this one. This is the one we have to. I have a conflict that day, so we're going to look into moving that off of the, May the tenth, so. Maybe not. Trails Task Force Committee, councillor Taylor.
Yeah, the next meeting's May eleventh.
Junior council, councillor Frizzle.
Next meeting fall twenty twenty-one.
I have a question on that. One of the things that's becoming quite successful and we're seeing it with the. City of Kamloops and we're also seeing it at SD seventy-three as student advisory committees. And maybe that is a little more responsive for students and it doesn't require the same. Parameters and it, it allows council to refer questions back to students and it's very easy forty-five minutes feedback. So that it's, it, it just lends for more of the student voice to come through to our community and it might free up. You know, any hesitancy and maybe that council is why we're seeing it. We also kind of have to rebuild it because of COVID and so we've lost. Some of, some of that past structure. It's just something to consider and it may make it a little bit easier for, for next year. And I think council would be surprised at the wealth of information that we could, we could get from them with just something a little more informal.
Yeah, I know. I, I think everything has to be looked at post-COVID and, and, or we might still be in COVID. But adaptation for sure, whether that be a change in structure, whether or not the school district has the ability to have the. These students have Zoom conferences. If, if it's just too hard, then we have to adapt or they, we have to let them adapt as well. Where are we next? Forestry Working Group, councillor Bamford is away today. Next meeting is May eleventh. And last one is can you make, Community Economic Development Task Force, councillor Frizzle?
That meeting is probably going to be in May. It's all going to depend on how.
Yeah. Speaking of adapting, Community Representation Awards Report, sorry, Awards, councillor Sim.
Tourism was great. Next meeting is May the fifth.
And Wales Ray Forest Commission, councillor Bamford's not here. It's to be determined, but we do have a society meeting tonight to discuss small grants. So. Staff report, CAO report is there? Any comments, questions of the CAO? Once again, a huge amount of work in difficult times. So Jill, get to that for a second so I can catch up on my. Agenda as well. Okay, any questions, comments, comments from this group? Thank you for your efforts on the vaccination clinic. I know that, that was minute to minute sometimes as to how that was going to roll out. But in the end, we still weren't as crazy as Logan Lake, who actually had to do the result of the parking lot in sunshine. The morning of because of a power outage. So, but Interior Health honored the commitment to the assistance of Mayor Robert Smith. So congratulations to her on that one. But yeah, so questions?
I just in the report, the lighting, the, I didn't know if you needed feedback on that, about the hydro lighting?
Yes, there was an email sent out to council to go on a night. I needed a time or a date when you would do that so that you can provide some feedback back to B C Hydro on. What you think of the four lights that are set out.
Oh, I didn't know he needed it today.
It would be great if you could tell me today.
Oh.
Arrange it today. Yeah, so, so what, an email was sent out to count.
Yeah, I, sorry, my question was, did you need that feedback? I, I thought today was the day for the.
Oh, yeah.
I have my feedback.
If you've gone and done it, then I would take feedback, sorry.
Councillor Sim, would you like to give your feedback on?
My feedback and my family's feedback is we like the one that was the closest to the strawberry moose, which was the dullest one that didn't look like we were in a stadium.
So did you pay attention to the intersection one while Hydro Road and Clearwater Valley? Cause it's brighter on purpose because it's an intersection?
We did not make that connection. We just felt it was a stadium. So we didn't like that one, but I can see the rationale for it.
So I think this suggested that there could be more than one level of lighting.
Yes, that, that was the purpose of it. So what we were thinking is that you would choose like. The dollar kind, one of the three dollar ones for the streets themselves and then the intersections. And if the intersection one is quite strong, we also thought that it might make sense to have the brighter ones at the higher profile intersections. And then the, you know, more, more rural areas would have the lower light for the intersection. But it's a safety.
It makes total sense when, when I hear it that way.
This is like choosing wedding cakes. How are we supposed to decide anyways? Anyways. Yes, thank you for that. And I, and I keep forgetting to go out there, have a look. So I'll try to do that tonight between evening meetings tonight. Cause I believe our evening meeting tonight is in person here, I believe for the last time in a while. Yeah, excellent. So this is Hydro Road intersection or?
Intersection of Hydro and Clearwater Valley.
Okay, yeah.
They're lined up on Clearwater Valley.
I keep wanting to think it's Wildwood, but it's Hydro Road.
Okay, thank you. Dare Till Almost Buck Road.
Okay. Or, okay, okay, good. What, what, what is?
Deer in color. Just a silhouette.
Yeah, spray painting booth at nightlight, right? I think it was in there, but sometimes we don't read all, all the details because we're bad counsel. Highlighted, you mean brighter? Anyways. But you do have to be able to turn your mic on occasionally, but not for your sassy comments. Anyways, moving on to the next one, which is a council strategic plan, twenty twenty-one first quarter report. Once again, getting work done. It's pretty cool. See things happening.
I would comment on page forty-nine. Deepen the government to government relationship with the Central Nations Community, Community Discussion. So on May sixth, we will be, as councillor Herring alluded to, we'll be doing an emergency preparedness tabletop. As a wildfire in the municipality of Clearwater. So there's fifteen people. Well, we were hoping that we could do fifteen people in person in a large area. So there'll be a couple of representatives from the mayor and councillor Herring will do in person, but council can. Come into a Zoom session. So the stakeholders will all be in Zoom, but we'll have SIM, barrier, Clearwater and T N R D folks. On the tabletop exercise. Just wanted to highlight that. So May sixth, it'll be nine to noon. We'll be sending a proper invitation for you. But not everybody can attend in person. It'll be interesting because also if we were to have a fire, how with the restrictions. I know that there's essential services, but it'll be good for us to go through that scenario to figure out how you'd actually be communicating properly through. Zoom or Teams or whatever, because not everybody would come into a room either.
Yeah, we still have to deal with disasters even when there's pandemic coming on. So, and it's really, really great to. To ground true some of the things that we sort of take for granted in the process, which has been, always been a fear of enacting emergency plans. So, yeah, I look forward to that one.
The other one to highlight is on page fifty for the prepare a road maintenance strategy. So as part of that, we've been moving along with the road making strategy. Council had identified in this year's twenty twenty-one budget. Through three different processes. Seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for roadworks this year. So three hundred and twenty-eight thousand will be the report that'll come on May fourth for council to look at. That would be chip seal and crack seal or whatever we think is the most beneficial, efficient use of the money. There's the two hundred and forty thousand that council had already approved earlier for paving the eight fifty meters on Sunshine Valley Road and. Five seventy on Dunn Lake and then the normal annual one hundred. Thousand for capital and fifty thousand for operating and the fifty thousand and one hundred thousand has an identified list that we've. Are just finishing off verifying and that work is actually starting. And that work is actually starting by next week, if, if he hasn't already started to go doing ditching, and I will send that list to council by email, so you can see what's getting done. We haven't allocated everything yet, because there's a couple of things we would like to be just checking out until the fall. But this year, we wanted the work to be done primarily in the spring. Line painting has been sent out to our request for quote, it'll start in June. The lowest bid was just over $19,000, which is great, because it's a little bit less than last year. It's the same company as last year, so I just wanted people to know that we are moving more readily on our roads work this year, so that's exciting.
That's exciting, including the part in the next service agreement with the two recommendations there, or the one recommendation for two things to get done, so hopefully citizens can see that we're actually starting to move on some, some nagging road issues, especially, including one on Council Frizzle's wrote there, so.
Last comments, or?
Oh, go far away.
Blackwell is under priority five, which is housing, I spoke to one of our primary, our primary builder today. He's in the process of nine building permit applications and another four coming on board for the water area.
Yeah, that's the first building, real building of residential houses since the prior to '07 or something, isn't it? Yeah, really, quite a long time, since Windhaven, really, in a, in a big way, so. It is for sure, yeah, lots of discussion on housing on every front. Okay, so, service agreement with MOTI, re-ashful servicing, there's a recommendation that council approves entering into a service agreement with a long number in it, with the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure for the amount of 170,000 for the purposes of completing paving of 60-millimeter asphalt hot mix on a portion of Sunshine Valley Road, about 150 meters of length, I don't know if that's one lane or two lanes. That's two lanes, 850 meters, I never have to check on that, and overlay paving of 50 millimeters of asphalt hot mix on a portion of Dunn Lake Road for just over half a kilometer, kilometer, which should make a lot of people happy, and that Mayor Blackwell and Chief Administrative Officer are authorized to execute the service agreement. You can. You can move it, but are there any comments of staff or questions of staff before you do? Counselor McKenzie? I was just curious about the Dunn Lake, was this? That's from Lundin's up the hill.
No, this is from the rail tracks to just pass McGill's driveway.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
The area from Lundin, the Lundin till area, that's still a bit too soft, so we want to keep filling it this year.
Preparing road bed on the Lundin section over time and monitoring is where we're gonna go on that one, but yes, it'll be, we'll start at the beginning and finish at the end, but this is very exciting, especially the Sunshine Valley and making some progress on Dunn Lake Road as well. So, you want to move it, Council Frizzle wants to move it, and a secondaire from Council McKenzie, all those in favor? Excellent, the next one is contract award for annual refrigeration maintenance at North Thompson Sportsplex. There is a recommendation there. Mr. Merritt, you want to say anything on this one? This is the same contractor as usual, or? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I said, so yeah, can be lower, and it's the standard contractor that we've used in the past. So there is a recommendation there, somebody wished to move it, moved by Council McKenzie, seconded by Council Herring, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. So this is the fun one coming up, because apparently it's how we live these days. Audiovisual upgrades for council chambers, so you have a report, I'll let you take that out. But it's a combination of a couple of things in there. But yes, having, having, all of us having struggled through this in various work aspects and other types of meetings, I think this is something that, though we seem to have started for the pandemic, or started cleaning it up anyways, it's gonna become a way of life moving forward, so we might as well, you know, look at Mr. Penny's fine work here and make a decision for moving forward. Questions of staff? Counselor Sim, sorry.
I was just wondering, I love the work that was done, and I really appreciate the time that was, went into it. Given the fact that Zoom has seen so many interactions, like today, we had it on the infrastructure that they could just call in, is, do you anticipate that being a savings instead of not paying out those travel costs? For our consultants? Which leads to my second one, did I get the understanding that it's transferable, so that even for meetings like in the gym, it could be moved, or is it all hardwareed into this is it?
Some of the other soft, some of the other software upgrades, and that's really would be useful no matter where we are.
Right, I think that's what I was going, so thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, iCompass is one of those things that we use at the TNRD a lot, and we do use it here as well, but yeah, that's one of those good behaviors that I don't know if I'm quite there yet. But yes, when I need to refer to things, iCompass is awesome. Okay, so there is a recommendation, oh, Councilor Taylor, fire away.
How big is the TV going to be? I, I'm not normally a fan of a big TV, but obviously in this situation, it's going up on the wall, are we going for something? Okay, and, and the hardware costs at one time, but the software's annual cost, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. Council Frizzle.
So with this presenting of meetings will be more seamless than watching you making sure you're pushing the right buttons and making sure they can be heard what you were doing today.
Won't have to use the video from the laptop.
Right.
So, yeah, make it easier.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, having seen the camera, or looked at the cameras, the, the ability to get a better picture versus the, I'm looking at two pictures right now, one from my laptop, and one from this, this screen view from that laptop is, where is, something else?
The other one, too, just to know quickly, is that it will move, the camera will move around if he's speaking, which makes a big difference.
Oh, you're in the hot seat. Yeah, and it does, and that's the thing, you know, we all sit on various things, or have done this with our phones and stuff for meetings, but one of the things that makes it really hard to have an effective meeting is stationary camera like we have right now, and the inability to see who's talking. It leaves a lot of people out of the equation, especially if there's a mix of in-room and out-of-room participants, so I think this is great.
Counselor. I'm definitely on board with the hardware, I'm not sure I'm fully put into the benefits of the software, the iCompass upgrade, could you speak a little bit more about that?
The council and the district of Clearwater, I've always tried to be, you know, at a professional standard, and I, it keeps us at a professional standard, because you're buying the hardware, but if you don't buy the software, I realize it's an annual fee, but if you don't buy the software, then you're still kind of like halfway there, if that makes any sense.
Council Fizzle.
I just a question, is there any consideration on reconfiguring the room?
Interesting point.
Just, just bringing it up. One comment that I'll make to that, it's up to the council and the, the new CAO, I think, to talk about that, but one thing to remember is that you're a business meeting of council, you're not necessarily here to be speaking directly to the public and things like that. So I don't know that it's very effective if you're back as to people either, because you do have audience, eventually I'll have audience back in here, so I would just think about those things.
Yeah, and I don't know what the school board does, but CNRD actually has two screens, so that you're never in a position where Council Sim is where she, to see the screen, she has to turn around. Is it, so more TVs, where, I actually want more TVs. Okay.
Just to, Council Frizzle, I, I really like that question, because I do find that, like, our presentations, they feel awkward, our speakers, they feel awkward, the turning of the neck feels awkward. I do appreciate the, the, the business facet, but I find so many of the interactions are part of the business, that if anybody felt like treating this like a puzzle, it would be interesting to see what other suggestions came up, just, you know. Yeah, the neck does get to it.
So, yeah, I think, I think, I think we can make some in-house adjustments to those things, for sure, over time, but as far as adding to it, expensive, anything we need to move for a recommendation, right now, I think we're good, but go ahead.
It'd also be cheaper to buy a second TV than it would be to move all this around.
Oh, look at that, so. You go up there, we'd all be staring into space. Anyways, there's a recommendation for stuff so far. The recommendation, Council directs staff to move forward with the purchase of both the required hardware, audiovisual improvements, and software upgrade for iCount, this for the amount of up to $9,000, and the council approves a 2021 financial plan amendment of $9,000 to be funded for the operating reserve COVID restart funds. Moved by Councilor Herring, seconded by Councilor McKenzie, further discussion?
I was just gonna say, if we need two TVs, does the amount need to go up?
Actually, it won't, because the nine, the fourth, you'll have a pro rate for the 4,000 for this year.
There you go.
Yeah, no, I was thinking just the ex, the, the cost of the extra television.
Well, if you, if you approve the 9,000, you're actually not gonna be paying 4,000 for iCompass. You'll be paying a prorated rate for the year.
Oh, I see, so there's more room in this year's, okay.
That's why we said up to 9,000.
Yeah, it's your ICBC, I, I, iCompass rebate.
Okay.
Check of $400 for a new widescreen, that we're not watching. Anyways.
Thank you.
Further discussion amongst ourselves, seeing none, all those in favor? And that passes for now, even though Councilor Taylor seems to be concerned about multiple TV images of, you know. Oh, you're good, okay, okay, more. You want, you want a smoke machine? The, the, the recommendation is passed, if you would like to do an amendment for a smoke machine, you have to do that before the friendly amendment, before the recommendation is passed. Anyways. Moving on, 2021 community survey results, some of this has been touched on, but yes, very great, good survey. Good information in there, further comments?
Does it, would anybody else like to? As I was really surprised by some of the data, certainly our retirement age, that was a notable reflection, things marvelous that we got such high engagement. I also found it really interesting, for my learning, is not to make assumptions, neighborhoods were one, and making sure that we find avenues, that the new people that come to town have plenty of different ways to access some of the information, like what our community healthy living coordinator said. Oh, I didn't know, so how we always think that we're doing it, that we've got new people coming in all the time to continually refresh. That which keep repeating, number of school-aged children was interesting, and also the home-based business number that had gone down slightly. That was another interesting one to me. But overall, I, I am so grateful that we did this again, that was an excellent comparative. Just, and that we're still tracking, that our community values are still the same, it's still lifestyle and that. And the other notable one is the 38% who put roads as high priority. And I, I think that that's excellent community feedback that we can, we can act on.
Yeah, it is good data, good data is always good. Further comments, nope. Okay. The next one is appointment of fire department officers, information only, but it's nice to see a few people stepping up. I know we've, we're losing a few, a couple have moved on as well, so. Yeah, Jessica Gunn, I believe, has moved out of town, so she's been a very active member, and then I will be doing presentations to two more people.
So Jan Westenchoff and his wife have moved out of town?
Yeah.
And Chance.
And Chance. But they've been fairly, was good at recruiting new people, and people like Elsie Prime, who are new to the community relatively speaking, stepping up, and, you know, Evan Kapacinski, well, that's an old town name here, so, but for a long time, yeah, but stepping up into, to leadership roles is excellent, that's great, I'm glad that people are willing to take responsibility in this day and age, for sure. Moving on to bylaws, building regulation, bylaw amendment, there's one, two, three recommendations there. What is the desire of council on bylaw number 251? As I dig to get to it, there we are. So this is, maybe staff comments a little bit, this is basically cleanup of the forms, etc.
So it's actually just making it easier for the applicant to fill out. Staff tends to spend quite a bit of time assisting applicants, because they don't fill the application out properly. So it's been dropped from what, six pages, and a repetitive four-part application form down to three pages, and then there's some other quick things that were being cleaned up, so take, removing appendix B and C, and then having the application standalone, and then just cleaning up, because there's a change in the solid fuel appliance, and I think that's good.
But basically, shortlist here, I mean, cleaning up a few provisions, but it's, it's reducing the amount of red tape, almost, in a sense, at least clarifying the information to make it easier for people, which is a great thing in this world.
And it's an online application now, so it's available PDF, so you can do it online.
Excellent. Okay, so what is the desire of council on recommendation one? Thank you, secondaire on that, Councilor Taylor, discussion. So like this, right, me reading this, oh, where is it? I just had it. 95. Oh, it is this one. District of Clearwater bylaw number 251, a bylaw to amend District of Clearwater Building Regulations bylaw number 129, 2014, or 2014. Whereas the council of the District of Clearwater has adopted Building Regulations bylaw number 129, 2014, and whereas the council deems it desirable to amend bylaw number 2, 129, 2014. Now, therefore, the council of the District of Clearwater, in open meeting, assembles and acts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as the District of Clearwater Building Regulations Amendment bylaw number 251, 2021, all those in favor? Passes, and now we have number two, and maybe number three together. Thank you, secondaire on that one, Council Frizzle, thank you. District of Clearwater bylaw number 251, 2021, a bylaw to amend District of Clearwater Building Regulations bylaw number 129, 2014, whereas the council of the District of Clearwater has adopted Building Regulations bylaw number 129, 2014, and then, whereas the council deems it desirable to amend bylaw number 129, 2014, and now, therefore, the council of the District of Clearwater, in open meeting, assembled, and acts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as District of Clearwater Building Regulations Amendment. This bylaw may be cited as District of Clearwater Building Regulations Amendment by Law Number Two, Five, One, Twenty, Twenty One. All those in favor? Passes. Second and third reading. Okay. Thank you for that. Moving on to the five year financial plan by law. First to third reading. Questions of staff comments? This is basic stuff. So recommendation one is the District of Clearwater by law number two, four, nine, twenty twenty one, the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five, five year financial plan be introduced and read the first reading. Moved by Counsel Taylor. Thank you, Chair. Seconded by Counsel McKenzie. District of Clearwater, twenty twenty one, five year financial plan by law number two, four, nine, twenty twenty one, a bylaw to adopt the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five, five year financial plan. Whereas section one sixty five of the community charter requires that council shall adopt a five year financial plan. Now, therefore, the council of the District of Clearwater in an open meeting assembles and acts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as the District of Clearwater Number Two, Four, Nine, Twenty, Twenty One, Twenty, Twenty One, Twenty, Twenty Five, Five Year Financial Plan. All those in favor? And
I would like to move that we read second and third reading.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Seconder on that one. Counsel Fizzle. District of Clearwater, twenty twenty one, five year financial plan by law number two, four, nine, twenty twenty one, a bylaw to adopt the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty five, five year financial plan. Whereas section one nine sixty five of the community charter requires that council shall adopt a five year financial plan. Now, therefore, the council of the District of Clearwater in an open meeting assembles and acts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as the District of Clearwater by law number two, four, nine, twenty twenty one, twenty one, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty five, five year financial plan. All those in favor? And that passes. Hey, yay bylaws. I love reading bylaws bylaws. But you know, the second one there especially constitutes a heck of a lot of work by staff and congratulations on that one. Moving on to correspondence items, we have recommendation on the removal of private land for woodlot license number W zero, three, zero, seven. Questions of staff on that one, maybe?
One of the properties, which is property lot, district lot, three, eight, six, two, is in within the district of Clearwater boundaries. And then the second lot is actually within the T N R D boundaries, moving it from the forest land, managed forest land to residential doesn't change the amount of taxes that are reflected on it.
Any further questions, comment? Yeah, Counselor Sim.
I don't think I've ever seen one of these.
That's probably because we haven't had anybody take private property out of their woodlots within the municipal bounds.
What happens? Like, what does it do? Like?
It just means that he's dropping it. He's actually off. He is downsizing essentially.
Selling a property or ten intends to subdivide it off or remove it.
It could be, yes.
Could be. So it could be sold.
Yeah, that's right. So he's removing it out of his woodlot.
And then, sorry, just tell me again what the what the property classification is.
So right now it's managed force or it should be.
Yeah.
And then it'll go to residential, which is exactly the same tax.
Okay, okay.
And many years ago, when you when you went into woodlot, purchased a woodlot, you had to have so much like, I think it was six hundred hectares of private land.
Yeah.
To attach to your lot and that's such a change as well. So that's probably the other reason.
How much land would that be in DL three, eight, six, two approximately?
It is exactly seventy nine acres or thirty two hectares.
And where is it?
This is up by Campbell Creek.
Yeah, I think you might be able to.
Okay, okay, okay.
There's actually, I believe, property anyways.
Okay, that's great. But I've never seen it. Thank you.
Yeah, it might be easy to read on the map behind you. Lots of numbers are all there, so. Just for your own clarification at some point. Yeah, never mind. Yeah. After the meeting, you can he, never mind. You can you can borrow Counselor Taylor's new glasses. Okay, so there is a recommendation. Somebody wish to move it second that's if Counselor Sim moves second by Counsel McKenzie. All those in favor? City of Penticton, B C government use of Paramount Sea. New words. Anyways, there is a letter there. There has been some news on this, not news, but news coverage on this. Dispute between the city of Penticton and and the government of B C, but it's up to you. You can take a moment to read it if you wish. While I drink a glass of water and decide if you want to do anything or just receive for information.
I can share a little bit of background. So this has been this letter as it says, it's gone to the U B C M executive. It's also gone to the Sylga executive. It's been debated with their local area associations down there. The issue of Paramount Sea is had some people concerned and activated in in one ways. Other people are saying they prefer, they like to see that. I'm wondering if at this point in time, it's not something just to watch how this plays out. I think that there's some things that are going on in the city of Penticton that have maybe creating this. So to me, it's a receive for information with the intent to watch how things unfold.
Yeah, I I I need to understand this more over time. And you're right, there's a lot of history going on with this or issues with that. So are you going to make the motion that this be received for information?
Received for information and watched carefully moving forward.
A second or on that. Do we need a second or that? Second or on that? Counsel McKenzie. All those in favor? Thank you for that. Yeah, it's it's good to know things are going on, what's going on in the world, but at the same time, I don't know exactly what we would do about it. Correspondence information items. Stop me if there's something you'd like to have a question on. Item A, Thompson Nicola Regional District Building Inspection Services. Hopefully we had some good final news on that. See Victoria Support for laid off hotel and tourism industry workers. That's interesting. Under there.
Responded to this on April sixth.
Yeah.
So you've already sent in your
Good. Integrated Storm Water Management Assessment Grant Approval. So we got a a grant there. We're always thankful for grants, ten thousand dollars. And regional update Ministry of Municipal Affairs. So that's our regional calls. I don't think I was on that one. No notice of a motion, no other business. We do have at least one member of the public slash press on there. So any comments from the public? And yes, I I do. Thank you, Stephanie. No questions. And Ms. Smith, it might be Charlotte or somebody. Oh, can't hear Mr. Penny. Is it Mike Smith on there? Okay, anyways. He can't. He says he can't hear Mr. Penny. Well, that's because Mr. Penny doesn't have a microphone because and all the more reason to spend money on upgrades, repurpose some of the stuff that's around here and and make it all smoother.
And if you carve out money, maybe you could get your grown up desk.
Let's let's not talk, yes, small desk jokes. Anyways. So that takes us to our in camera. We do have a camera under. I'm going to have to drag it out.
Section ninety one, C and I.
So can I get a motion to move into in camera? There's sections ninety one, C and I. So moved by Counselor Herring and seconded by Counselor Taylor, I believe. Let's take at least a five minute recess. So see you back at the four oh five ish or a smoke break ish and then we'll go into camera.